That's exactly it. You sure?
Yeah.
That's it. Absolutely. Chocolate, I'm good. You sure? Come on, wave if you can. Picture of that he takes. That's exactly it. You sure? That's it. Absolutely. Chocolate, I'm good. You sure? Come on, chocolate. You're looking fading away. Oh. Chuck, wave. That's Chuck. You guys went to beauty together. You just didn't know.
I knew it. I knew about both of you.
He knows everything.
Superintendent has to step out for just one second and make a call, so we're going to give them a couple of minutes leeway here, so we just... Good afternoon. Doug Donovan, Chairman of the School Board, and I'm going to call our regularly scheduled meeting for August 4th. Today is Tuesday, August 14th. The time is 4:04 PM. All of our board members are present. We have a public hearing scheduled for 5:00. I'm glad that you all are here today with us, and if you'd like to speak before the board, there'll be a couple of opportunities, one of which is at the start of the meeting, and then at the end of the meeting, and then at 5:15. So if you'd like to speak, there's a card in the back of you, just fill that out. I have the opening exercises today, and I'd like to say that we had a good start in the school year yesterday. I've heard a lot of positive things, and we're excited to get things underway. And I've asked one of our pastors to come and open us up in prayer, but before he comes, I'd like to have a moment of silence for a young man who was killed in an accident that took place on 480 in our county, 17-year-old Alec McMurray. A young man who's getting ready to start his senior year at Citrus High School, football player, and a great kid. And with that, I would like us all to stand for a moment of silence, please. Thank you. Rob Valden is here with us today for First Baptist Church. The pastor. Rob is going to lead some prayer, and we'll have a pledge of allegiance if he may say he wants to.
Thank you. It's a pleasure and honor to be here with you all today. I've come bearing good news from First Baptist of Inverness. We are excited for what has been doing in our community. We are passionately and perfectly pursuing him in everything that we do. One of the things I want you to be aware of is we have an event where we have coordinated with different churches in the community called Murd Citrus, and this event is for the sole purpose of having a positive impact on students and lives and breaking down any denominational barriers that exist. So we're excited. That event's going to be on August 25th. If you have an Instagram account, or if you have students that have an Instagram account, they can follow us at Murd Citrus. Let's pray. Father, we've come here today, and we are grateful to be here in this place, where we are thankful that you have brought us here to this meeting, where we can come and discuss business that pertains to our school systems, the students that we care so deeply about. Father, we ask that you be with the students as they start off the year, and that the new school year is here, there's excitement, there's a fresh sense of newness and a routine that's being established, or the students are adjusting to the new school system, or the new classes, whether it's going to be seven classes this year, or we ask that the adjustment will be smooth, and that it'll be effortless, or that they will be able to make the transition with ease. Father, we ask that you be with the school administration, the teachers, the faculty, the staff, the students, and, Lord, you put a hedge of protection around them, that you keep them safe in everything that they do. Father, we ask also that you be with the family of Alec McMurray, or this dear family that lost their son, the community that lost its son, or we ask that you be with the football team at Citrus High, whereas they are dealing with the loss of a teammate and a brother. We ask that you be with Samantha, his girlfriend, this time where she is dealing with that he is no longer here, where we just ask that you be in all of this, where we ask that you guide our discussion today, and our speech may be seasoned with salt. We lift this up to you in your name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Reverend Valden, for being here with us today and opening our meeting in prayer.
Yes, Ms. Powers. If you'd like to hear it.
A person that many of us worked with for many years, Carolyn Hayes, who's at Inverness Middle School, the big count, and the wife, Pastor Hayes, and she died last week, and her feelings today. Keep her in our access, Mrs. Powers.
Okay. All right, do I have a motion adopted, agenda is recommended by the superintendent?
With approval.
All right, we have a motion by Ms. Bryant, second by Ms. Couts, to adopt the agenda as recommended by the superintendent. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Anyone opposed? Motion passes five to zero. This is the first chance for citizen comments. Is there any citizen comments? No citizen comments, we may even like to address the board. Okay, seeing none, we're going to move on to the consent agenda. Do I have a motion?
With approval.
Motion by Mr. Kennedy, second by Ms. Powers, to approve the consent agenda. Is there any discussion? All right, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye. Aye. Anyone opposed? All right, motion passes five to zero. We ask for the recognition of our donations, please.
Yeah, please say. Approve the Citrus County Detention Facility Bicycle Donation, valued at $803.44 to the Citrus County Schools Bicycle Safety Program. Approve the $500 donation to Fernando Elementary School from York Cause LLC Duke Energy Foundation. Approve the $1,000 donation to Rockcrusher Elementary School from Rockcrusher Church of God. Approve the $1,000 donation to Citrus High School from Gibson Mechanical LLC. Approve the $15,000 donation to Citrus High School from Barnador Financial LLC. Approve the $1,000 donation to Christopher River High School from Lisa Yider. Approve the $1,000 donation to WTC Technical College from Rotary Club of Homocentris Springs Foundation Inc. Approve the $1,500 donation to WTC from Citrus Road Club Inc. Approve the $1,600 donation to WTC from Citrus County Cruisers Inc. Approve the $1,000 donation to WTC from Gerald St. Champ DAV Chapter 70. Approve the $1,000 donation to WTC from the Rotary Club of Inverness Charity Foundation Inc. Approve the $500 donation to WTC from the Ladies Auxiliary Knights of Columbus, Abbott, Francis, Sandler, and Amazon Council, number 6168. Approve the three $500 scholarships given to WTC from Inverness Does Road, number 232. Approve the $500 donation to WTC from Citrus County Shooting Club. Approve the $15,000 donation to the Marine Science Station from the Citrus County Education Foundation. Approve the $5,000 donation to the Marine Science Station from the Block Daddy Foundation via Citrus County Education Foundation. That is a total of $52,903.46.
That is phenomenal. Thank you all, and we see some of these large donations. It's just really impressive, but I tell you, anything that we can do to help students is great, so that is great news for us, over $52,000, almost $53,000. Thank you, Mrs. Dell. Okay, next up is item number five, Education Services, Scott Hebert, and it deals with the funding for district instructional leadership and faculty development program. Dr. Hebert?
Yes, and I'm requesting approval of the 2018-19 funding for the district instructional leadership and faculty development program, and Mrs. Voight-Haylor is here to provide. I know this was an item that was pulled, so she's here to provide some information to the board on that.
I'll tell you, I pulled this, and the reason was, when I called them to find out about it, it was a grant, not a request. I don't understand, and she explained it so beautifully and in such depth, I thought everybody needs to hear that. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Good afternoon to everyone. The district instructional leadership and faculty development grant comes from an allocation from the state for leadership development. We've received this for several years, and we've used the funding associated with it to develop leadership skills in our school-based administrators and district administrators. What we have been working with has been the Center for Educational Leadership out of Washington, University of Washington, and we've been replicating the training that has been going on at the state. For the last several years, there's been the State Commissioners, the Commissioners Leadership Academy, which is now known as the Brian Vassler Leadership Academy, and originally, we were able to send, under Mrs. Hill's recommendation, two administrators a year to this training. Well, around year two, year three, we said, okay, this is going to be too slow to get it through our district. So we did use the instructional leadership faculty development grants to contract with Sal for the Center for Educational Leadership, and have had them come and consult with us, and we've been able to now get 48 administrators through, and through doing that, we've had them come, and they have helped deepen our leader skills in recognizing and identifying high-quality instruction and giving evidence-based targeted feedback to teachers. The training involves some classroom training where we practice, just in very regular training, and then we go through learning walks through schools and go practice scripting and providing evidence-based feedback. So that's what we're continuing to do this year. We're continuing to deepen our knowledge in that and getting better at those observation analysis to increase quality instruction in our classrooms.
That's great.
Isn't that all it is?
That's awesome.
And I'd like to make the motion that we approve this funding, second. Thank you.
Okay, we got a motion by Ms. Bryant, second by Ms. Powers, to approve the 2018-19 funding for the district instructional leadership and faculty development program. Is there any other discussion or questions?
There's a couple things we've done, and then there's the past. It's everybody working together, and that I watch. Everyone's putting their part in, their knowledge in, and all working together toward the common goal.
Very good. Anything else?
That is cool, too, if you make it, make it so. I thought it was a grant. Sometimes it's cool to think.
Okay. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye. Aye. Anyone opposed? Motion passes five to zero. Our next item on the agenda is item number six, School Support Services, Mr. Bishop?
Yes, sir.
And this deals with the fire alarm system at LeCanto Primary.
That's correct. The agenda item today is for the agreement with the engineer to engineer the fire alarm out of LeCanto Primary School. So today, I'm requesting approval of the professional service agreement for LeCanto Primary School Fire Alarm System Upgrade. I have Mr. Stokes here today to provide you a general overview of the system, as it has some technologies that are probably not good at schools at this time, but it's new technology that he'd like to share with you.
Very good. Mr. Stokes, you come on up.
Yes, sir.
You know, I think it's interesting, because when we saw this at Inverness Primary School, we looked at a large amount of money that, to us, it's sometimes unbelievable that we're going to spend, you know, in this case, $580,000 on a fire alarm, and we learned at Inverness Primary School, we moved away from sole source and saved quite a bit of money with that, and Mr. Stokes, I think, has been on top of this, and it's a good report, but I did have some questions for you in regards to the fire alarm system, and I thought one of the questions I had that he was able to answer that would be important for the board to know, deals with the intercom override, that if there is a fire alarm that goes off, that there is the ability to override the fire alarm to get an emergency message out. And this is a critical piece that's already been discovered as a result of Margaret Stone and Douglas, and some things that we need to look at, so Mr. Stokes has some good information, and thank you for being here and sharing with us.
My pleasure. One of the things that we need to keep in mind, if we were to build a new school today, the technology Mr. Doug's referring to would be required. It's not optional if we built new construction. So what we've done from the Facilities Department is taken a look at that and some of the security aspects of it as well, and we're using that technology in our retrofits now. As you know, these systems are 20-plus years old, or literally, as we told you in the past, buying parts for some of the older ones on eBay, so they have life-cycled out, as we like to say it. They don't make the technology anymore. With that being said, the new systems we're using, instead of the traditional bells and the horns and whistles, they'll now be a voice system. They will tell you, please exit the building, a fire alarm's going to detect, or whatever pre-programmed message we put in. One of the fine points of it is that, as Mr. Doug pointed out, we can go use it as a secondary intercom. It's designed for the fire department to come in, and the fire marshal will be able to say evacuate this and command his various people on-site, but it can also be overridden by the school as a whole. So the cost of the technology, the interesting part, is minimal compared to the systems we're putting in now. The only additional cost really is some speakers' sound for enhancements. So I went through it with the engineer pretty closely, and they're a big proponent of it. We support it, because it gives us more than just the power alarm platform, and of course, getting rid of the old system will help, costing us a whole...
Specific questions?
Does it actually keep resistance as far as being able to do that? Is that part of the aspects of the...
No, it's a standard system, but it has multiple locations on it, so we'll have one...
If it goes down, it has to...
Yes, and the loops, the way they're designed, they're standalone, so if we lost a building, we still have, the other buildings are carried, yeah. It's smart technology, all the devices, they're programmable. We use that now with everything we do, so we can address things and control HVAC systems. We do that, and a lot of this is all code right now, it's required for NFBA. So we're just taking one more step with the voice portion of it. If you've noticed, like in our assembly or cafeterias, we have a voice module in those, that's code required. All we're doing is taking that technology, spreading it to the rest of the campus.
And I know there's been some discussion, too, about needing to evacuate an entire school if it's in one building, although I don't think for this system, we'll still have a complete school evacuation.
Yes, sir.
Is that all right?
Yeah. That gets into the code side of it, depending on distance of buildings, things like that, whether we can even do that, but traditionally, we evacuate the entire campus for a safety perspective.
So there's discussion, too, about how the fire codes might need to adapt and change, because on large campuses, if there's a fire alarm in one building, is there a need to evacuate the entire campus? Those are questions that are being with that closely. But, you know, again, when we're talking about spending enough money, we are for a fire alarm system, it's good to know the capabilities that it has. Now, I do have another question. We have the incident at Inverness Middle School, with the fire that started in the roof that was detected in the early morning hours by...
Yes, sir.
...I believe. This system, this new system, is actually a monitored system?
Yes, sir. That's a code requirement as well. Anything new we put in has to be monitored. Probably, and I'm taking a guess here, about 60, 65% of our systems now are monitored as we've upgraded. It's required that we tie them to central. The downside is, they will call me at 3:00 in the morning and roll you out to go check it. We had, last Saturday, two weeks ago Saturday, I was on site at 6:00 with one. But the good news is, in that particular situation, that building would have never burnt had we had the system in there.
Right.
We would have had damage, I'm not saying that, but we would not have, as you noticed, when we were on site there that morning, they didn't have to put the water on it until after it had burned for a while, so had we been able to get there a little earlier, we could have minimized that impact.
All right, very good. Any questions, or if you would like to make a motion?
I'm welcome.
Thank you.
Oh, just, you know what, if you're... Oh, you need a motion? I'm sorry. Approve, I'm sorry, approve the professional service agreement for the LeCanto Primary School Fire Alarm System Upgrade.
Second.
All right, motion by Mr. Kennedy, second by Ms. Couts, to approve the professional service agreement for LeCanto Primary School Fire Alarm Upgrade. Mr. Kennedy?
Oh, it's coming after a week, though. It's unseparable.
Okay.
Just a while you got in here.
All right, any questions for Mr. Stokes, Mr. Bishop? Okay, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye. Aye. Anyone opposed? All right, the motion passes five to zero.
Just, you know, Eric's here, and we just finished with an amazing summer.
Great summer this year.
It is, and your team, your leadership does so much, and we're so grateful for it. Can you just give us a quick snapshot? You don't have to spend a lot, but just to, you know, because a lot of us know, but the audience doesn't get to know, that not only the things you did, you've saved us a lot of money by taking on projects and by also saying, you know what, that project, I think we can save some money if we do it a different way.
We had a couple of those this year. We're in the process, we evaluate everything we do now from a cost perspective, as well as the safety, of course, on it, but some of the things we were doing in the past, we found we were self-performing certain jobs, and we found that contractors could do it faster, cheaper, better. Other things we were contracting out were now self-performing, because we found the rate of return wasn't there on it. We did LeCanto Primary School, some of the separations, hopefully you made it, had a chance to see where we separated the classrooms out. Beautiful job, knocked it out of the park, guys did a great job. It was cheaper, faster, and better than the previous years. We're changing our purchasing habits, working with purchasing, it's, yeah, we've got some good stuff going on. We're proud of it.
Well, we're pleased and thank you for what you're doing. Thank you.
Glad to know he came in. He takes a penny, he's using it so much.
The private sector, you're sorry.
If you go downstairs, you can hear them screaming.
All about the dollars. We saved theirs, we put it back in classrooms. And just so the board knows, my staff and I will be coming before the board in October at the workshop to give you a state of the district on the support side, and we're going to capture, we've been having a nice job this summer capturing and pictures, a lot of the projects we've done, and Mr. Kennedy leans to, but we'll have a full presentation to capture those things, as well as many other areas in support side that we've been working on over the last year.
And of course, one of those at the top of the list is the LeCanto School Complex access. That we've had before the board, but I know that's...
We will bring it back. Yeah, we have every intention of bringing it back, get that back before the board for discussion. It's my hope that we can bring it back, hopefully, before the October workshop. Okay? Thank you.
All right, very good. Okay, next up, item 6B, Human Resources, Suzie Swain.
Good afternoon. I ask the board's approval of the instructional and support recommendations as listed on the Goldenrod, and we have quite a few hires I want to add.
Almost had a third page.
Just want to throw that in.
Approval of the instructional and support personnel as recommended by the superintendent, second.
All right, motion by Ms. Couts, second by Ms. Powers, to approve the instructional and support recommendations.
Which is over three pages long.
Over three pages long.
And I've got to just lift out, and I mean, there's a lot of wonderful names, but there is a name there that I am so excited about, and he has come back, and that's Richard Hilger. Mr. Hilger, who was a principal at Citrus High School, and he was a guidance counselor, I believe, and that's really, I was going to say, then he was student services, he was principal of Crest, was willing to step forward for principal of Citrus High School, but clearly, he did enough camping over this last year, and wants to do...
He was also a motorcycle messenger.
That's right, he did. But we're appreciative, because we know our guidance counselors are important to us, helping Ms. Powers.
Absolutely. The person he called, he is, he's so good, and as you say, he's the son of the motorcycle. I've got pictures of him in the lap, is it...
Oh, yeah. Just so wonderful, wonderful.
All right, very good. Any other questions, comments?
Just a comment for Human Resources, and beautiful job of retaining. I was so impressed with the breakfast that we had for our new teachers. 102 people stood up, and what I was really recognizing was that some were new, some had five years' experience, some had 10, some had 50, and we had people that had over 20 years' experience currently work for Citrus County, and we often need to retain them now. That's all in my word, retain them. Retain. Yeah, the job well done.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
And I know it's throughout the state, there's still a challenge for bus drivers, but we seem to be doing fairly well in that area.
Yes, we are. We are processing every day, we are processing new substitutes, bus drivers, and then Maryland has sent, I want to say at least five or six, recommendations for new drivers just this week. So yes, we can still use them, Mr. Mullins, but that is correct.
Okay, very good. Anything else? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye. Aye. Anyone opposed? All right, motion passes five to zero.
Yes, we have 40 postings right now, but about 30 of those are working on certification. So they are in the process of either preparing for the test and taking a test so that they can be certified, but they currently hold bachelor's degrees, and they are taking tests, preparing for tests to become certified.
They are in our classrooms now.
Yes, ma'am, they are in our classrooms as long-term subs.
Jack, I have a question for you.
Yes, ma'am.
I know of a young lady that might want to get her foot in the door. Who does she need to talk with? She doesn't have a degree in education, but she's got a degree in something.
Tell her to call us, please. Tell her to call myself for Brendan, and we will be more than happy to help, absolutely.
Help her walk through.
Absolutely. Yes, ma'am. Yes.
And we need to advertise it, even with any college degree.
And we can do that. We can put that on our website, definitely.
Yeah, maybe we can do a slide and run that on social media, you know, if you have these...
We can do that, because we have a Twitter page, so we can do that. That's a great idea.
Okay. Very good. You did.
Hey.
I have another two people, that's all right.
That's perfect.
Okay. Next up is the job description for program specialists for student services.
I ask the board's approval of the new job description for program specialists for student services, and Ms. Kit is here today to answer any questions.
Okay.
Number approval. Second.
All right, we have a motion by Ms. Bryant, second by Ms. Couts, to approve the new job description for program specialists for student services. I have a question on this in regards to, you know, as we face the need for mental health and the expansion of our mental health... So yes, we can still use them as Mr. Mullins, but that is correct.
Okay. Very good. Anything else? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone oppose? All right. Motion passes five to zero.
Yes, we have forty postings right now, but about thirty of those are working on certification. So they are in the process of either preparing for the test and, and taking a test so that they can be certified. But they hold, they currently hold bachelor's degrees and they are taking tests, preparing for tests to become certified.
They are in our classrooms now.
Yes, ma'am. They are in our classrooms as long-term subs.
Jack, I have a question for you.
Yes, ma'am.
I know of a young lady that might want to get her foot in the door. Who does she need to talk with? She doesn't have a degree in education, but she's got a degree in something.
Tell her to call us, please. Tell her to call myself or Brendan, and we will be more than happy to help. Absolutely.
Help them walk through.
Absolutely. Yes, ma'am. Yes.
And we need to advertise it. Any college degree can.
And we can do that. We can put that on our website, definitely.
Yeah, maybe we can do a slide and run that on social media, you know? If you have these.
We can do that because we have a Twitter page, so we can do that. That's a great idea.
Okay.
Hey. That's perfect.
Next up is the job description for program specialists for student services.
Ask the board's approval of the new job description for program specialists for student services, and Ms. Kit is here today to answer any questions.
Okay.
Number approval.
Second.
All right. We have a motion by Ms. Bryant, second by Ms. Kells to approve the new job description for program specialist for student services. I have a question on this in regards to, you know, as we face the need for mental health and the expansion of our mental health services. I mean, obviously, this is, seems like a pretty critical position for someone to have. And so I just wanted to know a little bit, when we look at those universal behavioral screenings that we're going to do, could you just explain a little bit to the board about that and about how this person's going to be involved with that process?
Sure. What I'd like to do, I made up just a very short little PowerPoint just to show the differences. And I have a guest expert here today, Sarah Hebert. Sarah's been very instrumental in the whole mental health plan.
Are you phoning a friend?
Sorry?
Are you phoning a friend? With, with, with Ms. Hebert?
And, no, she's right here.
Yeah, that's right.
She's coming up. Come on, Sarah.
Mr. Hebert, Dr. Hebert, do what I meant when I said that.
So anyway, I thought, I mean, I can certainly explain the differences between the levels of the screeners, but not, I can't explain to the degree in depth of some of the, the actual information that we're looking for in screeners or not looking for, you know, looking for students that are mentally healthy. So we're making sure that students are mentally healthy.
You know, and this kind of tied in for me because I saw your interview on Bay News Nine, Ms. Hunbom. You did a fine job.
Thank you.
And, you know, there was a real focus there on how we're kind of moving quickly on our mental health initiatives. And, you know, so to see you on television and represent the county, you did a very good job. And it's interesting because parents have questions about, I think especially, or they will have questions about this, this screening process.
Well, thank you. And I was hoping that they would put some of the other information that I had shared with Kim, the lady from the paper, from the Bay News Nine, that, you know, this really isn't new for us, you know, and explained what Mrs. Himmel had started a couple of years ago with our Mental Health Wellness Committee and the professional development last year that we implemented two professional developments for all staff across the district that at that time wasn't a requirement. We're required to do that now, but just for her and everybody to understand that, you know, we didn't have to come up with this mental health allocation and, and for us just to start doing it all of a sudden, that we've been doing it. Now.
A lot of things already have been in place.
Right.
Yes.
And we've got some money to go with it, so.
Did you mention that the state approved the plan that you submitted?
Yes.
On Friday, I think?
It's been approved. Well, actually, they're looking over some things today, but I've been in touch with the lady from DOE. Everything is good. Yeah. Thank you. But I have a lot of good help. Okay. So do you want to, do you want me to let you just talk? I think Sarah can explain it a lot better than I can.
Okay. So we kind of divided up by levels, who was doing what. So at pre-K level, there's a instrument called the ESGI, which has been used by our kindergarten teachers, and we are now expanding to pre-K where they do kind of their regular academic ratings and things. And we're adding some social, emotional screener questions to that. Like last year, we added a language screener set of questions. This is something we're developing locally. We have some pre-K teachers on that committee and some people with experience of pre-K to help come together with a small, you know, a small set of questions that we think will be effective. And after teachers get to know their pre-K students, they'll, they'll complete that and then we'll look at that and see if we see children at risk on the pre-K level. For K to five, we chose the FastBridge Sabers. It stands for Social, Academic, and Emotional Behavioral Rating Scale. This is also, there's a teacher form and a student form, but we chose the teacher form, which means that the teacher's going to rate the students. Basically, it's a nineteen question. I didn't know. We'll have a picture of it here in a minute. But the teacher has to have at least one month to get to know their students. So we chose the last two weeks of the FastBridge window for them to do this. So that is the seventeenth through the twenty-eighth of September. That gives them five to six weeks to get to know their kids before they fill it out. It's only supposed to take one to two minutes per student. So the teacher just is supposed to look at the item and whatever comes to their mind, their first impulse is supposed to be their answer on that. And basically, it just comes up with either elevated risk or normal, one or the other on that. We felt at K to five, it was better to have teachers do the ratings that they have, you know, especially with younger kids, they may have trouble understanding items, but the teachers at elementary basically see their kids most of the day, that they would have a good handle on that. And this slide right here is what the teacher would see. It can be done on the computer, the iPad. It's web-based and they just get the set of questions. I don't know if you can see that, like the first one says arguing, never, sometimes, often, almost always. And they're just supposed to go with their first impulse. Cooperation with peers, temper outbursts, disruptive behavior. So it's going through a set of kind of red flag behaviors and they just know the severity or how often they see that. So for some kids, they may have never from any of those. For grade six through twelve, we felt like a self-report on the part of the students was better. One, we felt like they were at the age where they're better able to understand questions. And two, at middle and high school, there's not necessarily a single teacher that knows them very well. So then you'd have the question of which teacher would you pick? How would you, you know, it probably would be a real deal to do all the teachers. So we felt like student self-report was better. It's a program through Pearson called the BASK-BES, which is the Behavioral Emotional Screening System. Currently, we use the BASK in the school psych department as a full-form behavior rating scale. The BES is kind of a mini version of that, designed specifically with this kind of screening in mind. It's run through a platform called Review 360, which will allow us as a district to sort data by classroom, by grade level, by school. If we're looking for patterns or trends, or it seemed like one school has more concerns than another, that platform allows you to do it. And this, the program specialist position is the person that we see being able to kind of sift through some of that data for looking for patterns among the district and for the record keeping that's required for the state. There's a variety of reports that we can print from that. We're just aiming for mid-fall for the first screening because it, when the, you know, we have the purchase order in, when it comes in, it's not really an item that you get in your hands, it's something that will be installed electronically, or actually, it's web-based, so we just need passwords and things like that. They'll be sent out when it's time. It goes to the students' iPads. The students complete it on the iPad. It takes five to 10 minutes and it gets submitted. And at that, again, it gives us a elevated risk or not at risk. And so it's really just helping us to identify students of concern. One of the things we said is we're really trying to make sure we're not missing those kids who don't have any of the typical indicators of mental health problems. So the kid who has excellent behavior, good grades, appears to come from a really nice family, you know, there's nothing there that would have warned us. And I know a few years back, we had a middle school student that kind of fit that profile. He might have been shot himself. So we're trying to make sure like that kind of kid has a chance that if they're not comfortable walking up to the office and talking to a school counselor or a teacher or anybody that may be on this, maybe they would say something. I mean, there's no guarantees that a child, you know, won't, won't fit, put everything positive. There are some validity indexes. This is just a sample of one of the reports, but at the top, those F-index Response Patterns Consistency, those are looking for kids that are just either Christmas treeing or, you know, trying to not really pay attention to what they're doing. So there are some built-in safeguards to try to eliminate the chance that a child, you know, if one of those indexes at the top came out as a concern, it might be something to look and say, oh, this data might not be valid. But otherwise, it gives us an overall score and then it looks at internalizing behaviors, which should look at things like depression and anxiety, self-regulation, which is kind of anger control and impulse control, and then personal adjustment, how they feel about how other people like them, how they get along with, you know, others and that kind of thing.
Sarah, a question. When would this typically fill us out? In a class or?
We're picturing homeroom. Having a homeroom period where they just, like I said, it's five to 10 minutes, so it's not a long period of time. Our biggest challenge as staff is going to be when this data comes in. We, in the plan, we have a process in place to kind of call through the data, kind of triage, if you will, who looks to be most, we're looking at other factors too. We have early warning indicators as well that we can pull in. And we also emphasize, you know, we've done a little overview for staff, you know, either they've already had it or it's coming this month. And we tried to emphasize too, like this isn't the only way to get your child some help. If you have a child that you're concerned about, we want anybody, bus driver, cafeteria worker, teacher, students themselves, we want them to feel comfortable to say, hey, I'm still worried about this kid. So even if they don't come up on the screener or we're in between screener times, we've tried to emphasize, you know, come see us. But this, we're hoping this is a way to get a broad scoop on every child. There's a letter that we found from another area, another district, that explains really well what we're doing and it gives the parent an option to opt out. Usually with universal screening, if we do it with everybody, you don't need what we call an active permission for everybody. But we are going to give them the option to opt out if parents aren't comfortable doing that.
What does it look like for the staff, though, sharing that information, a concern? You know, they've got a student. I know a lot of our instructional-based teachers, that's part of their just routines, that they'll communicate with either a referral or they'll communicate, pick up the phone and do guidance. But when we're talking about probably expanding that to, you know, custodial staff and, you know, aides and others, it becomes sometimes, and bus drivers, that process may not be as clear. So is there a mechanism? Is there a?
That's a good question. And when our committee meets, maybe we need to formal, I think right now, every school kind of has their own system.
I, that's what I was saying.
But maybe we need to make sure everybody has a system in place. We talked at elementary level about students being able to refer. One of the schools uses what they call Just Us Box, where students can put anonymous concerns in and the guidance counselor reads it and it can.
That was going to be my next question.
And also, it's positive referrals that you can do. So if somebody puts something in, there's not a guarantee that it's a, you know, no, somebody's ratting on me. It could be somebody's saying something nice. So that way, students don't feel afraid to put something in that, that box.
Because outside of the screening windows, that becomes the other factor. And again, because we talk about the iPad, something that they tend to interact with, is there something either we have or maybe we should look at where allows them to self-report themselves at any time? That says that maybe they're not going to the counselor?
Yeah, there's, there's some forms that we've been working on. I know some districts have an app where students can report.
That's what I was just going to say, because I don't know how many kids are going to go into the kind of form unless that form is a button that's, that's on there.
And in fact, the state is supposed to be, yeah.
That may be something we look at.
State's supposed to be developing an app for our high school.
Yeah, and I knew they have, so I wasn't sure how far along that was.
So we also, just when the screening comes through, we have what we call a broad problem-solving team looking at results. We did say that at our last meeting that any child who has elevated risk will have a parent contact. So even if we decide we don't think it's severe, we're still going to make the contact via phone at least to say, you know, we just want you to know, this is how it came out. If you want to come to, you know, school and discuss it. If we feel it's a more serious concern, we're, you know, we're of course inviting a parent in and we're setting up a plan.
And this person, I mean, and what I wanted just to know is, I mean, it's specialist position. I mean, this is going to be someone who's going to be watching for the data and making sure nobody's slipping through the cracks as best we can see, making sure that issues are being addressed. And I think that is an important part of, of our mental health opportunities for students. We had to have somebody making sure that we're kind of coordinating it all.
I think that's why we felt like we needed that position, because like that person is going to make sure this runs.
Yes.
You know, because this is, when you think about it, it's a, it's a big process with all the, you know, doing every student in the district. So we wanted someone to be in charge of it, make sure everything's operating, making sure they're collecting the data, looking for patterns and trends, making sure too that, you know, when kids have come up, have, have, we, how will we address that? You know, what have we done?
I know this is kind of, I think, somewhere connected to an MTSS-type formula system.
Right.
A lot of, I think the MTSS is in Skyward, is it not?
Yes.
Will this be also where I get, you know, I see a kid and I'm wondering, okay, so where they're at, is it going to say this is a level two? And so they're kind of getting some, you know, that, which would let us know, they're probably getting some interventions and some, and some working, or I've got a level three and we know that there's a lot of interventions probably.
Right. There's, there's actually two processes in Skyward. One is the MTSS or RTI section, where just like any other intervention for reading or math or, or just behavior, it'll be.
And I'll just stop because the MTSS is a multi-tiered system of support.
Yes.
And the, but the, the other one that you said, the.
Response to intervention is the older name for MTSS.
Okay. Because I, yeah.
Most things in education just keep changing.
We get confused.
Yeah. Sorry about that.
RTI, MTSS is the new RTI.
Right. So we are, we're working on a mental, they're developing a mental health classifier and then, you know, if you ever set up an intervention in Skyward, there's a process you go through. We're just making sure the codes are in there. The second piece is we developed a mental health tracking sheet, which will be accessible to counselors, social workers, and psychologists through Skyward. It won't be accessible to teachers because we feel like there's sensitive information on there, which of course, if they're involved with that student, they've probably been in the meeting. But it's a way for us to write down relevant information about the child, the physician's name, the counselor's name, if they have an outside counselor, some meeting notes. And on that form, we say what the decision was that day as far as what we're, support we're providing, who's responsible, and what's happening. So, and that should be a rolling form where every time we meet, we can do that. So we just want to make sure we set up before anybody leaves that meeting on the student that we know who's in charge and who's doing what.
And obviously, communication is a big part of this, not only with our staff and teachers, they know why we're doing what we're doing, but also the parents, they know, you know, what, what the process is. I mean, the environment's changed since the larger Stollman Douglas Incident, Incident number seventy-two, six, and we're moving, you know, forward and we're working very well to make sure we're addressing those things. But this is, this is a big deal. This is a important job. And so, but I just want to make sure we're all knowledgeable of what's going on, because it's easy.
Right.
We could be, there's going to be questions about this. it's easy, we could be, there's going to be questions about this.
Well, the plan is massive, really. I mean, we were given such a small amount of time to write it in. But, you know, it's a work in progress, too. I know we have the official plan in place, but there are pieces of that that we have committees working on to kind of flesh it out, make sure we have good processes.
As you mentioned, communication, I was very glad to hear that you're going to include the students, because I do sack schools at the elementary and then one at the middle level. And they've got a lot of programs between a little student government and their administrators, respect program. And so there's communication between those children now. And somebody will say something when they see a child in need. And it doesn't matter whether they put their name on it or it's anonymous, but these kids are buying into those kind of programs to help each other. And so I'm glad we'll have somebody to sort it out.
Right. And that's why we felt like we needed somebody, you know, with such a massive role, really, to ask, you know, somebody who's already existing to take that on. We just felt like it wouldn't get, get its, you know, just time.
Everyone's doing follow-up. It's actually this one.
No, we're all doing follow-up, but they're kind of in charge of making sure, like, if something happens with the system, making sure it gets back up and running. Or if we're glitched or we have new students coming in, you know, we want to make sure that all of that runs smoothly. And again, at the end of the year, we're responsible for reporting data to the state as far as the number of students screened, how many were identified and those kinds of things. So that's, that's part of their job as well.
Will outside agency or outside third-party interventions somewhere hopefully get captured? Because that's the other piece. We're so, we have been so dependent, that your department has been so dependent on, unfortunately, we're an island. And so we often only have the information to help our students because we've had to exist within this bubble. And what we know, and I know the work that you're doing, Doug, is to say, we can't be in this alone. We need those agencies, we need those families, we need those third-party, we need our, as our sheriff's department communicating with us if we're going to really be effective.
Right. We, the mental health tracking sheet has room for those kinds of things. I filled one out so far this year, I just used the draft. And we, the parents were very supportive. We had the pediatrician's name, the counselor's name. So we have a release signed so that we can talk to them and the form started so that we can keep in contact with those individuals and make sure that the counseling they're doing, you know, and what we're doing don't clash with each other. We want to make sure we're kind of, you know, we may work on some school-based things in school, but we don't, we want to make sure we're heading in the same direction.
So with MTSS, everybody's, and every general public student is going to at least be a 1.
Right.
And then from there, different screening or other criterias could move you up or down, depending on where you're at, that scale. And then that would typically represent, if I'm a 1, everybody in the school's going to receive a certain level of screening and services that we're providing. And then as I, maybe I'm needing a little more, I might be classified as a 2. I'm going to get everything, of course, in 1, but I might get some more. Is that correct?
Right.
And then as 3, I would get more.
And 3 is more, yeah, more intensive, more individual. And at that point, likely, there's been at least a referral for outside services.
That's true.
But they're not, the parent jumps on that. But our, our goal is, which is a little different form we had for behavior PMPs, mental health PMPs, we had said at the Tier 3 level, we would definitely at least do an outside referral somewhere, possibly at Tier 2 level, too, depending on the need. But by Level 3, definitely those are kids that we feel need our support, but they also need outside supports as well.
All right. Very good. Are there any other questions? We've got a motion, a second on the floor, so anything else? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Anyone oppose? All right, motion passes 5-0. Thank you very much. Thank you for, for the presentation, too, and the discussion on that. All right, we're going to move to item, the next item is the budget update. Ms. Wilson.
So real quick, we just, we're finishing up finally the postings of everything to the old year and, you know, that'll determine our beginning balances. Nothing's changed drastically from the last numbers that you had, but we will be bringing the information to you at the workshop with our tentative budget and to be voted on September 11th is where we are. That is where we vote on the final budget and the capital work plan and the annual financial report. So we'll have more in-depth information for you at the workshop and then you'll have your nice books for you, you know, in enough time, at least five days before that September 11th board meeting. I'm hoping to get them earlier, but five days, I can guarantee you that. Okay?
Okay. Any questions for Ms. Wilson? I think we're good. Thank you very much. All right, next up is our attorney, Wes Bradshaw.
All right. So first and foremost, which may not be what you're expecting, I would like you all to know that at 12:01 today, we got from the Department of Law Enforcement our official ORI number, which makes that the first step in the continuation of the establishment of the Citrus County, Citrus County School Board Police Department. So that was from the resolution, we sent information up to the FDL, we sent it to the FBI. FBI comes back and gives us our ORI number, so that gives us the ability to start the press harder in that. So just wanted to let you all know that we've done that and I came in at 12 o'clock today. So, School Resource Officer vote agreement. What would you like to know? We had a meeting Monday morning between the sheriff, sheriff's attorney, me and Ms. Himmel, the county administrator and Ms. Lynn. The only change that came to the contract was one part that added a clause in, in the auditing portion to say that the person or, excuse me, the entity requesting the audit would pay for the audit services, which does not include any other expenses than the cost of the auditor. It doesn't include any overtime or anything else like that. So it is a bare bones minimum amount. That was the only change in the entire contract. Every other portion of the contract stayed the same. There was no change to the proportionate share portion. So the contract's not illegal, not ethical, not immoral, not anything else. That was the only change that occurred and the sheriff agreed to sign it. There is going to be some modification to the contract because at 2:00 on Tuesday, the Board of County Commissioners voted to basically give the money in the contract that they were going to give to the sheriff's department, to the school district, to use for school security, which is, this is part of the school's security, which will necessitate a, two contracts at this point in time. We will have a contract with the county for, so that they can give us that money. The, that contract will essentially be the same as the contract that they had originally signed, although it'll get narrowed down some in the sense that they don't need to have a contract saying what the duties of the SROs are, you know, that, that portion of it, because that's not going to be their concern at that point in time. The contract that we have, that the sheriff agreed to sign, but it was a three-party contract, will now become a two-party contract. There will be the only modifications in that contract will be the removal of the county as, as a party to this contract, because we will have a contract with the county as far as the money's coming in. But the auditing portion is not going to change, proportionate share's not going to change, no other part's going to change in the contract. And so that is probably, in a nutshell, what is, what is going on. I'm sorry, before I forget, Ms. Council. So I know me and Ms. Lynn, the county attorney, are working, trying to get a contract together so that they can approve it on their August 21st meeting. Their meeting's usually coordinated with ours. They have a special meeting somewhere there and it will get back to where ours are on the same day. And that contract will be, I anticipate that that contract will be brought to you on the August 28th meeting. I will finalize this contract and bring a contract the sheriff has executed, I'm asking to execute it first before I bring it back to you for your signature on the August 28th meeting. So, yes, ma'am?
I just want to understand, because we spent a little bit of time on that first meeting, on the proportionate share for the grants, federal grants.
Yes, ma'am.
And at that time, we thought it was all hypothetical and, you know, but with splitting these contracts now, would we, if we're going to be responsible, would we share with the county?
Yes.
Us and the sheriff's department?
We share nothing with the sheriff's department, because the sheriff's department is funded by the county. So the proportionate share portion of the contract was not giving any money to the sheriff's office, because the sheriff, the sheriff generates no money.
Right.
So it would be back between the county and the school district again.
Okay. So that, when we talk about proportionate share for federal grants, because we've now subsequently found out that he's applied for one.
Yes, ma'am. He applied for a federal grant two weeks before the board meeting that we had when the, on the, on our Monday special meeting a week ago.
So if that money comes in, it's shared between the county and us and then we distribute it to the SRO program?
Now, what would end up happening is if, that money would be delivered back to us, would have to come to us, and if, since it was used, because we'd already paid for that money, it would be split proportionately between us and the county. It would reduce our costs.
Okay.
Or it would keep us from purchasing something that, something that.
Correct.
If it enhances the program.
If it comes back to us and say, we are going to do this with it.
I was specifically speaking of that particular grant, because the grant that was applied for was, was for salary and benefits, which we would have already paid. So that money, in that particular case, should come back and be split between us and the county proportionately. But if the grant came, that was going to buy something that was enhancing the program, then I will see where, you know.
Okay, we come on, like, if the grant comes in, then we look at it individually. It's not, it can't be every grant. We have to look at, at what grants.
If the contract says that we will work cooperative.
Yes.
So.
Okay.
So, and, you know, that's, if there are monies that are out there that would enhance the program, but would not add, but are not reimbursing part of the program, then, I mean, that's what those monies would be spent on.
That grant also referred to a program that they had included, which would be brought to the school district as a mental health program with our kids. We have not seen the program, our counselors have not been to the program, and that's what we tried to explain yesterday. We don't allow programs to come into our school system without our staff reviewing it, accepting it and knowing where it's going. So that was part of it yesterday about the funding and then I think the comment was made, he was going to use it for overtime, but that's something the grant is threatened for and that was one reason we felt like it was wrong, that we kept the grant, load of information in there or as part of the contract, because people cannot go out there and get grants and then just assume that they're going to come to our school system and run these programs. So he agreed to that, he, you know, he got that part of it, so we were in agreement with that.
So Mr. Bradshaw, can you refer? What, what are our constitutional duties when it comes to the control and operations of the curriculum of the school? Does that fall under our constitutional duties?
That is, well, yes. And, and, yes. And that was explained as that, you know, it's not that what was applied for may not have worked, but you, but the problem was, is that the grant was applied for without anyone's knowledge and that you did not know whether or not, you know, they were kind of, it was for, the mental health training that the SROs and the supervisors were going to receive was free, but the grant, the monies in the grant was for reimbursement of salaries and benefit and it was scheduled out over three years also, which we have a one-year contract. So, you know, there was, there was plenty of problems in there as far as that grant was concerned. But, all right, that was, that's part of the problem that we had was that to come in and try to teach something that's not.
And I know Ms. Himmel has a question. We'll do that. We do have a 5:00 public hearing scheduled, so, but Sam, if you have.
It's not a question, it's a comment, so go ahead with your hearing.
Wait, yeah, we'll come back. We'll definitely come back. Okay. All right, so I am going to recess our regular meeting and I'm going to open the public hearing. The time is 5:00 in the afternoon. We have five items on the public hearing. Mr. Dixon?
Yes. Good afternoon, board members.
Yeah.
We have a final public hearing on four items that you've heard previously at workshop. First of which is a request to approve and adopt the revision of policy 3.90 regarding charter schools. This one is a complete rewrite. The previous version was 18 pages, the new version is five. The provisions include responsibility of Citrus County School District Administration, application process and eligibility requirements, requirements of the school itself, student eligibility and financial status. Be glad to answer any questions.
And this again is due to statute, if I recall, due to changes.
I just noticed it's on the second page, that, it's on the other one, that private schools, parochial schools, the home education programs are not eligible to become charter schools.
Yes, because they don't meet the same criteria for things as a public school.
No, but Ms. Powers, they can just get a scholarship now and just avoid all of that together, which is what is exactly happening.
And the, is it, scholarship or vouchers and, and they've been using them for years, so that's no problem.
We will be bringing back a future policy that includes provisions for HOPE Scholarship and that that's in the update.
Okay, is there a motion?
Any motion to approve policy 3.90 for charter schools? Say it.
All right, motion by Ms. Kells, saying to Ms. Bryant to approve the revision of policy 3.90 charter schools. Is there any discussion?
The only thing I would just remind this board is, this is why our School Board Association has come out against Amendment 8. This would gradually expand that.
I'm sorry, I'm just kidding.
No, no, I knew what you were, I knew what you were.
Yeah, you know, I'm just kidding.
Yep.
Okay.
I think there's been a lot of publicity about this amendment 8, so hopefully the public has been reading and some influential books, including All the Women's Voters have done a really nice job on all the amendments and I hope people read them before they vote.
It's said most people take the amendment 8 only as terminators and it's not.
Well, they're, they're guising it under the civics education. Everything else is in, hidden.
But it's what, what Mr. Kennedy was talking about in dangerous.
Okay. Is there any public comment regarding the adoption, the approved and adoption of the revision of policy 3.90 charter schools? Would anyone like to approach the board in regards to the revision of policy 3.90 charter Let's call for public comment on policy 3.90 charter schools. Would anyone like to address the board? Okay, seeing none. Board members, we have a motion, second. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Anyone oppose? All right, motion passes 5-0.
The next policy revision is 4.21, selection and management of instructional materials. These were also, these changes were also due to statutory changes. This is an extensive rewrite. This provides for adoption process for instructional materials, materials, processes for individuals to contest specific materials and procedures for objections and appeals.
I have a question on that, is, there's a person who always calls up and talks about the new material that's coming in the school system, but she's not a Citrus County resident. She works in Citrus County, but she's not a resident. And on the bottom of the page, it says that the person has to be a Citrus County resident, so she would not be able to.
Or a parent.
And she's not a parent.
I don't think she can.
I think she can talk during the thing, but they're, the process of appeals or bringing that to us, I think she doesn't meet that criteria. The law, and I'm grateful at least of this, was so that anyone that spends tax money, which could be argued sales tax money, in this county could have permitted that and that was modified during session. So I was grateful that at least we did that. But this has, this has been a continual moving target for a while and this is, you know, this has gone from it was only parents, then they, they tried to expand that and I think though they're finding, they're getting more than they bargained for, because we have people in some districts that are bringing forward saying that space aliens should be where we talk about our lineages come from and other things that are maybe not scientifically proven. Or at least if it is, we haven't gotten that book in our, in our, in our libraries.
Yeah, the state meetings, there's, there's some other counties that are having a terrible time with this, but the district level appeals, I like the idea that they have made it very, very clear who's going to be panel.
Yeah.
And that's, that's going to be great.
All right. Is there a motion?
I move to approve the revision of policy 4.21, selection and management.
All right, motion by Ms. Bryant, saying to Ms. Powers to approve the revision of policy 4.21, selection and management. All right, is there any public comment? Would anyone like to approach the board in regards to policy 4.21, selection and management? Final call, does anyone like to address the board, reference the adoption, or the approval and adoption, the revision of policy 4.21, selection and management? All right, seeing none. Board members, are there any other comments or questions? Okay, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Anyone oppose? Motion passes 5-0.
Excellent.
The next one is policy 5.40, student attendance. This is a revision based on statute changes that delete section 39.01, print 73, print C, add citations, 1,000.21 and 6A dash 100, 1044. These revisions are necessary and you can see it's all on that one page. If you have any questions, I'll be glad to answer them.
The only thing that I noticed was in B, 1B, where it says the students will be excused from any examination, study and work assignments for observance of religious holiday, et cetera. It didn't have the same language that A has, where it says they have opportunities to make up work assignments. The word excused, I'm afraid some of the children are going to say, well, I was excused from that exam. And I don't have to make it up, because it didn't say you had, I had to make it up. So I'm going to take that one observance and so I think we might be challenged on that language, you know, because it says everyone's excused and there's no.
Statutory?
Yes, it's statute.
No, but I mean, is this wording out of statute, do we know?
It doesn't say excused absence. I mean, that's what they say in attendance, but it doesn't say, it's going to be excused from examination, study and work assignments.
Yeah, it doesn't necessarily mean.
Oh, I know.
It just doesn't go that far with the policy language. I mean, you can still argue that point, but the, the policy language is more general.
You'll have somebody argue it. We need to be ready.
We could always tighten it up later.
Yeah, my suggestion would be, I mean, you can't change anything today?
No.
So.
You could bring it back in later.
Yeah, it's just.
Or I had some guidelines.
It just has to have something that, you know, work is expected to be made up on all absences. I mean, you could cover it with a blanket statement, you know, any actions required may, may not require makeup work.
All of our high school students are in pre-law. They argue each other.
Okay, is there, is there a motion?
I move approval of, adoption of, I'm sorry, move approval and adoption of revisions of policy 5.40, student attendance.
We're enjoying.
Motion by Mr. Kennedy, saying to Ms. Kells to approve, adopt revision of policy 5.40, student attendance. Is there anyone here that would like to speak and speak to the board about this policy? Is there any public comment on revision of policy 5.40, student attendance? Would anyone like to approach the board, speak on policy 5.40? Would you like to approach the board, speak on policy 5.40? Seeing none? Members, any other questions? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone oppose? Our motion passes five zero.
And the fourth and final is a new policy, 5.57, student dietary needs. This is a new policy that was requested by Food Services to address federal requirements for substitutions in diet due to medical needs. And Mr. Prestoni's here too, if you have any questions, we'll be glad to answer them.
I make a motion to adopt policy 5.57, student dietary needs. Sam.
Okay, we have a motion by Ms. Kells, saying by Ms. Powers to approve the new policy 5.57, student dietary needs. Are there any questions from the board?
Well, I have a comment, we have a question with, with Mr. Prestoni, and, and he's explained it, and I don't know how you're gonna keep all of this straight, but he told us that you can monitor all these fifteen thousand students and every one of their dietary needs, and I trust you.
We do, and we're lucky, we have a registered dietitian on hand, and track everything in our software systems, so.
Computers.
We take care of it.
Yeah.
And you've brought a tool as well.
Yes, and our cashiers are able to see it at the point of sale of the cashier station to know what every child has restrictions on, so we're able to check that before they actually leave our area.
Okay, I mean, again, we have the largest restaurant system that Mr. Prestoni manages in all of our county. Roughly ten thousand meals, lunches a day, roughly four thousand breakfasts a day, and he's monitoring and maintaining the dietary control of every student.
Every student.
I mean, can you imagine if a commercial operation had to do that? And he runs it like a business, because he gets money overage that we, that we correctly and appropriately spend to enhance the school's lunch and nutritional program. Is that okay?
Yes, sir.
I like paragraph four on this too, because above that it talked about disabled persons, but on paragraph four, it said that you can make substitutions for students that are not disabled persons, but are unable to consume a food item, and I like that that's put in. Would you like to comment on that?
Yes, ma'am. We go above and beyond, because every student's needs is special to us. So even if they don't have a 504, an IEP showing that they are disabled, we take everything into account, whether they're gluten-free or anything like this. We make sure we meet their needs, we'll order special foods if need to, and make sure we take care of our kids. That's what we're supposed to be doing.
That's excellent.
Thank you.
Okay, let's see, we do have a motion and a second for policy 5.57, student dietary needs. Is there anyone that would like to address the board or reference to this policy? Is there any public comments or reference to policy 5.57, student dietary needs? Would anyone like to address the board in regards to approval of policy 5.57, student dietary needs? Okay, seeing none, board members, any other questions? Nope, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone oppose? Motion passes five zero.
Thank you.
We do have one more item on the public hearing, and it's five thirteen. As soon as we adjourn the public hearing and get back to our meeting, we will have time for public comment on the regular meeting, so.
I'm requesting approval for the student progression plan for the 2018, 2019 school.
Move approval of the 2018, 2019 student progression plan.
Second.
All right, motion by Mrs., by Mr. Kennedy, saying by Mrs. Powers to approve the 2018, 2019 student progression plan. Now, I know in our initial packet, there, there was some, we didn't get the whole packet, but you all have that right, and just review it, so we're good, right?
Yeah.
Okay. Any questions? All right.
Dr. Niedig just does a great job, I mean, he does this committee meetings, and line by line, and they make sure everything is correct.
The whole committee effort, so.
All right, is there any public comment in regards to the approval of our 2018, 2019 student progression plan? Would anyone like to address the board in regards to the student progression plan? Last call, is there anyone that would like to speak to the board in regards to the approval of the student progression plan? All right, seeing none, board members, are there any other questions, comments? All right, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone oppose? All right, the motion passes five zero. Thank you very much, and with that, we will close the public hearing and reopen our regular meeting. And we are at five fifteen, and this is a time certain for public comment. Is there any forms of info out, Ms. Adele? Anyone like to.
No, sir.
Address the board, or anyone like to address the board? All right, seeing none, we're gonna move back to our legal part with Mr. Bradshaw.
I'm sorry.
Miss, I'm sorry, Miss, Miss Hemel.
Couple of things I wanted to share with the board today, that our two job descriptions, the police chief and the officer job descriptions, we did not bring them back today, they have been tabled, is my intent to bring them to you on August twenty-eighth, board meeting, and for your approval, because I think you all came out with HR to go over some things, some of you have added a few things to that, so I would like to bring that back to you all at that time. We also will need to discuss, do we move forward opening on the police department for other areas that we still need to provide security for. One thing I, what brought our attention today, that wanted me to discuss that with you, is we were informed today that every day money is picked up from every one of our schools by our SRO officers. Last year, we paid the sheriff's office seventeen thousand dollars. We are informed today that it will cost us nearly fifty thousand dollars to get that transported for this upcoming school year. Nighttime duty, last year, we paid about seventy-five thousand dollars to the sheriff's office for that, and this year, there's a big, there's another increase, which could be up to ten dollars per hour, which we could see another twenty-five to thirty thousand dollar increase on that. So I think that with the increase that we pay for the SRO programs, and the increase of these, and those other things that we also pay for, that I think we just need to look at other options. Whether we do or not, I still think we need to have that discussion on our August twenty-eighth board meeting. If that is okay with you all, if I bring that forward.
And so you're not saying it's gonna be, you're, you're not saying it's gonna be a workshop item, you're saying you wanna bring that to the board for a vote, is that right?
I can bring, yes. The job description for a vote, we can talk about, I mean, if we do the workshop first, we could certainly bring that to the workshop, and then move it forward to the board meeting for a vote, we could split that up if we wanted to, we'll bring both at the, at the board meeting, for discussion and for that.
You could, if you wanted to leave it in the workshop as well as put it as a board agenda item, chairman could recess the board, the regular board, we could go into it as a workshop or something, but either way.
Either way, it needs to be discussed and decided on what we want to work with.
Is there a reason for such a big increase?
Why are you gonna put it in a workshop, if you're gonna discuss it?
No, and as you, as I said it out loud, I kind of answered my, because it didn't make.
Well, that's fine, they just haven't discussed the, the job descriptions, or, so we could bring that as, if we could bring that to the board meeting, you could discuss it.
And Sam, is there a reason given for such an increase?
Yeah, it would be intentional.
A large increase, seventeen thousand to fifty thousand? Or it was just.
Twenty-three thousand dollars, am I correct?
I have a question.
Of the deposits?
We, we have told the cost to go on.
I have a question. Have we charged for the number of facilities that we provide the sheriff's office, ever?
No.
Is that something you might want to consider at the workshop?
Could you bring that to the workshop?
If they're gonna up, 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 we need to consider.
At one time, Chairman Dodd, you mentioned you had a number throughout all of this process, and saying about what that number was. I don't know, whether it was annually or monthly, what that rental would be, if the, if somebody rented from us the different facilities that we provide as part of an interlocal agreement, or part of a, you know, the MOU, I'm not sure, but it was a pretty significant number.
Right, well, mine was based on, on that exchange for the capital.
Right.
Equipment that he was purchasing, the sheriff was purchasing for the SROs, and that was the initial argument, was that there's a little trade-off here, and that's why we haven't paid for that in the past, because we have this working relationship that we didn't need to charge for the range, and all the different things that we have, and he, we wouldn't have to pay all these capital expenses, but, you know, we're past that now. I mean, we're, we're past all that, you know, I guess.
Working relationship?
No, past the fact that we've addressed the capital, we've addressed everything with the money, the finances has been, the financial piece has been solved.
But we are paying the capital in there.
Well.
I mean, it may not be stated as capital, but, but the capital is included from what the sheriff has expressed, it is included in those figures.
And that is.
And we kind of tried to argue that, and I, and I appreciate you trying to do that.
The cost.
So I'm just saying, while that's true, I, I agree with you, the dollars are done on the SRO, we've negotiated that, but we are still providing those resources at a cost expense in operations of the school district to provide those, those facilities. And there isn't any compensation that comes back, since we're not getting any reduction in the capital on the other side. It, it, it does warrant just to say, it feels like it's going one way, especially when we get a twenty-three thousand dollar increase to pick up the deposits.
Thing that I seem to be concerned about is, we've already been through this for about two and a half months, and I'm not really ready to go for two more years, but if we agreed on a contract, to a two-point-five million dollar contract, if he's gonna increase this line item in his budget, when he gets to two-point-five million, and he spent it all on our SRO program, can he bill us for any more than that?
No, ma'am.
So if he chooses to charge us this fifty thousand dollars to pick up our money every day at schools.
That's a separate agreement.
Oh, it's a separate agreement, so we don't have to employ, we can just hire our own guys.
Yes, ma'am.
For seventeen, and tell him we don't need that service anymore. We not gonna have the diet plate, though, please tell me we're not gonna have the diet plate.
No diet.
Okay, good. So we're just, if, if, if it's over the above the two-point-five, I'm saying that we'll find our own way.
And is, are those types of services too, that the, potentially, that you'll be discussing with us, that a school board, police department could be assigned those duties? I'm not saying you are, I'm just saying, I'm just trying to understand if those would be, what about extra duty? Because, I mean, we're still, if, if they're increasing, and we're talking about another twenty-five thousand for after-duty officers, we use a lot of.
And that would not be included in the two-point-five, I just want to be clear.
That's not in the two-point-five.
They're separate. Yeah, because, you know, I've, I've said before, we, we allowed deputies, five deputies in, in a magnanimous move, after Parkland, from March fourteenth to May twenty-fifth, and got a ninety-six thousand, three hundred forty-nine oh bill. That was a shocker, and I don't want any more shocks, no. So we need to, I don't know whether we can see what he's gonna spend the two and a half million dollars on, how he spends it, as long as he provides our SRO service, but I think it needs to be detailed, and if it's an extra service beyond that, we need to.
Contract calls for detailed expense.
Yeah, but I don't, I don't, I don't want, I don't wanna do this anymore.
We'll bring those figures to you, to the August twenty-eighth meeting.
If he, if he, I don't want him to provide any service that is not included in the current contract for two-point-five, and send us a bill without our knowledge.
Well, Ms. Kells, we did approve the school crossing of our contract, which that's a separate contract.
Right.
So it has typically been a separate item on, that we budgeted for, for extra duty details, athletic events, and graduations, and those things. The issue with the, the issue with the money, there could be other avenues that we can look at possibly, or to continue to have service by the sheriff's office, but maybe not as frequent, but there's a lot of discussion that can go on there. I mean, again, we have to realize that the, the actual putting together of a police department is a monumental task, and I would like to think that we're past that now.
I doubt we might.
And so, you know, if we've gotta give it a little time, I'm wondering if the sheriff was the one who dictated the increase, or if it came from a, from a ranking officer, do we know? How in the world are we being?
He is the ranking officer.
He's the sheriff.
Right.
I, I know that. So where did the information come from?
Today, Ms. Surge and I had a conversation with Major Lindhart, and he notified us of the rate increase for the extra duty hours cost.
When was that?
The extra duty hours for the hourly rate, but, but what about the, the money, the security of, of the money?
Oh, it's the drops.
They've given us a proposal of what the security MOU or agreement will look like, and they have added a piece in there that includes the bank drops. That's not been in the contract in previous years. I received that some time ago from them, they had not brought it forward until we, we typically bring the three contracts forward together. So I was, I've received that some time ago. I had clarification and phone call today with Major Lindhart on what those dollar figures are.
So there is confirmation though today, that that's, that number's still the number?
Yes.
Okay, so is that, that's something you can send to us then, a copy of that contract, so we can see the information?
I haven't seen it, but.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, I, you know, I definitely will see it, because I'm, I'm hoping that maybe, you know, that's a misunderstanding, I mean, we can see, but, you know.
Okay, it's, it's clear in the contract unless it's negotiable, so.
Right, and certainly the information we received the other day was clear, we had a conference call with Major Lindhart, with the search office, and we're looking over it, same thing, obviously.
Mr. Bradshaw, one thing that I guess you, what you explained a minute ago was that there's a three-party agreement, there's a verbal confirmation, I believe, that you had from the sheriff to the terms of that agreement, but now there has to be a two-party agreement with, with us and the county, and then a two-party agreement between us and the sheriff's department.
Correct.
So at this point though, for clarification, there is not a three-party agreement that is signed by three parties.
Correct.
So we are, if you're bringing that back to us, it's at least two weeks before we still will be without a SRO contract.
Without a written.
Without a written contract.
Correct.
So at any point, and I'm, I would hope this doesn't happen, but we've gone through this now for many months, at any point, someone, someone could still say, I have a problem, or I wanna insert some new language into this agreement.
I would hope that would not occur, but until you have a signed agreement, it's not signed until.
There's nothing, right now, we still, there is not a signed agreement. And that's to me, though, where I think we have to be cautious of saying instruments we have on the table, we're just gonna dismiss. And I think that's what I'm hearing from legal and from the superintendent about not pausing on some of the plans with a school board, police department, is to ensure that we have some backup until we have some of those things signed. And then, then you might have another conversation with us, but that's still, we're still in a position where we don't have something guaranteed at this point. We don't have anything written guaranteed.
Correct. What came out of the meeting was the one change, the contract, we'll have to change it a little bit to remove the county out of the one contract, so it'll be a two-party contract, but.
If he signed that one contract to guarantee our SRO program, right?
No, ma'am, he has not signed anything yet.
I thought he signed something on Monday.
No, ma'am.
He agreed to, he agreed to a third one?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, that's.
Presence of God, and three attorneys, right?
Three attorneys.
That's what I wanted to make clear, that's, that's not been, there's no, no signing.
It couldn't be signed because.
The one change.
Because of the change, and then the county was voting to, whether or not to be a part of the contract. Because the way, the way it was going to work before was that we were paying the county, the county, the money was flowing through the county to the sheriff through the budget process, or outside of his budget, but, but, but through that contract. The county basically said, we're gonna give the, he has already received three hundred, roughly three hundred eighty-five thousand, the, the county has already budgeted him, and through, because their, their fiscal budget runs October one through September thirty, so, and ours runs July one through June thirty, so from July one to September thirty, they've already given him that money, or it's in his budget. So they're basically funding nine months, and so that money, they're going to deliver to us, and then we will, you know, and then we're gonna pay the sheriff through our contract. But with the same auditing requirement that if the county said we want an audit, you know, we would be audited, which. know, we would be audited, which I know we're not scared of. We have auditor general in our, in our schools, three or four months a year, although, you know, it might not be the best thing, we're used to it. And then it would pass through that we would audit the sheriff's office at that point in time also, because they're the ones that are going to be keeping the records.
And I don't want it to imply that the Board of County Commission, I thought, was excellent in the way they've provided that empowerment, I believe, to the school board by the way they've handled this. So their, their effort was to try and streamline, I think, their process, empower the school board to have that, those financial resources to then make, for us to be able to make a decision.
Correct.
And, but, but I think it's important that we understand, there isn't at this point a signed agreement. There is, there is verbal understanding, but there is not a signed agreement.
There...
And I only say that because a couple of weeks ago, we were, we were in this position, and we thought it was all good. So we're going to still be in this position for a couple more weeks.
And, well, there is no signed agreement, because the old contract between the county and the school board that we both signed and the sheriff would not sign is going to be invalid, because it will, there will be a contract between the school board and the county, and a contract between the school board and the sheriff's office. But at the meeting, those, the two issues that were beholden, were resolved with the change that I had mentioned earlier, with the understanding that nothing else was changing in the contract, in the contract language, except for what I said. You know, the county doesn't need to have all the, what the sheriff, what the duties of the SROs are going to be in the contract that we have with them, and we remove the county from our contract, because we're not going to be paying them the money, and the flow is going to be there at that point in time.
And that is the reason there is not a three-party contract, because the sheriff agreed with us yesterday that he was going to sign the contract as is. The only reason the contracts had to be broken out was because when we got to the commissioners' meeting yesterday, they decided to give us the money rather than leaving it as it was. So our contract is with them, and then the sheriff's contract is with us. That's the only reason there is not a three-party contract, because the sheriff did agree to sign our contract yesterday.
Well, one thing that we need to make sure, that we know the facts on the extra duty details, if that's what is being charged to every other, every other person that requires extra duty. If that's the new rate, I would have a hard time believing that the rate to us is going to be higher than to other people. But I want to see that. I want to make sure that that's, that's not the case. And then as far as the timing of this, so basically, what, what you're telling me is that this change in this contract has happened since our meeting yesterday. This change for this, 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 this money for the extra cost from going from 17,000 to 50,000, was, it came after yesterday's meeting or not?
No, it was before yesterday's meeting. Can I address what you just said before that?
Yes.
The, it is a slightly reduced rate from what the general public is paying. They have reduced the rates for the general public as well. So I have the rate sheet for the general public, I have the rate sheet of what they're charging us. It's, he's got it outlined in a contract that the sheriff has signed, and that he's asking us to sign. So he has signed that those are the rates that they're going to be charging us.
Okay. And that rate that you have for a football game, for instance, is what rate? What's the hourly rate?
It is an hourly rate plus the FICA, the work comp, the admin fee, that comes up with a total. So the base rate is 25, but after you add those items in, it comes to $30.58.
Okay. So I will submit to this board, if you look at overtime, or extra duty paid for other agencies in this state, that is still a good deal. When you look at what, what other agencies are being, their officers are being paid to work events.
If they have to bring a sergeant in, and we've, and we've seen that many times, it goes up to $36 an hour.
Yes.
Correct?
Yes.
And I don't think it's that we're here to debate today about what the rate is for the officers, and if it's a good deal. What I need to bring to you all is that can we afford the increase of $50,000? Can we afford to pay officers 30 to $36 an hour? And maybe you all tell us that that's okay. But I think we need to tell you that we're having an increase in our budget for those new prices, and I think that we owe our taxpayers our commitment that we need to see if we can do it any other way. If we can't, then we accept these fees. That's what I think we need to look at.
So you want, you're going to bring back in special meaning the job descriptions, is that right?
Mm-hmm.
And then are we going to workshop anything with this, or is it just going to be approving the job descriptions?
We'll just bring it to the board meeting with the chart, we'll get the chart page and all of the...
Okay. Yeah. All right, very good. Mr. Bradshaw?
I don't have anything to ask, Mr. Bradshaw.
Okay. Are there any questions for Wes? Anything? All right. Okay, our next item is to approve the minutes.
Approve approval.
Second.
All right. Motion by Ms. Bryant, second, by Mr. Kennedy to approve the minutes. Is there any discussion? Okay, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, anyone opposed? All right, motion passes 5-0. And we have another chance for citizen comment. In the regular business, is there anybody that would like to address the board? Are there any green cards, any cards?
No, sir.
Okay. All right, now we have our opportunity to, for board members to bring up individual items. It's always a good time, because we share a lot of things that we're doing out there, our committees and our work, and so it's very valuable meeting when I hear things being brought up and discussed here. Mr. Mullin, do you have anything? Okay. Ms. Bryant?
Well, we've all been hopping around to schools. I was here yesterday, you've gone to a school, people are going to schools, and everything's good.
Okay, start.
I went last week to the training over at IPS with an active shooter on campus, or a big problem on campus. The first thing we did though was to do the old way, we'd get underneath something, so I spent quite a few minutes underneath a table. And then we went to the new way of doing things, and it's much better with the new way than the old way. But I think it gave everybody a sense of being able to do something if you're in a bad situation. You yourself have avenues now to pursue that can make you and the children safer. You know what to do. So I like the positivity that came about through that.
Great, okay.
I went to three of the different Alice training sessions, and there was continuity. It was the same training at every school, so we can be assured that every school got the same training. I was absolutely amazed at how well-received it was by all of the teachers, even pre-kindergarten, kindergarten. Teachers feel relatively safe, although they have to do all of the work for the children, because the children can't help them to do certain things. But well-received. And then I spent the last two mornings checking in little pre-kindergartners at Rockcrusher Home, Southern Elementary, and that's been a wake-up call for a high school teacher. But it was fun. And just one announcement for, I know we started with a tragedy, and we've got another, another, Coaster River High School had a very, very wonderful student, Brittany Iwanek, and I know you've seen her in the newspaper. St. Benedict's is having another blood drive for her on August 26th, from 7:00 in the morning until 1:00 in the afternoon. And she's, she's, she's fighting a really, really tough situation with this leukemia that's been diagnosed. But she was not only my student, but she was also one of my swimmers, and she was a really good one. And then I had her son, her brother Brett. It's a very nice family, and so they need our community's help with blood for her. And then, I just didn't want to disturb any of the other meetings, but you do have five certified board members, because I was okay in June.
Oh.
So I'm not my certification. I six hours on. We didn't have time for all that before.
So now you will, you will receive your award.
I'm official.
Officially, now, but you will have an award to receive.
Yeah.
You will. It's a nice black.
Yeah, it's black.
You get called on.
You work.
It's a lot of work. The pictures, any kid, and all this.
We'll be on the front row.
Yeah. I didn't do it in June, no.
Good job.
I've got, well, I'm still going to all meetings, but I'm done.
All right, Douglas?
The Alice training, I just have to, again, echo that both when my wife came home with teacher friends of ours that reached out to me and said, "Wow." I think there was a little bit, when you started saying, "We're going to give you options." You know, their teachers tend to have, you know, they have the way they want to do things, they're, they tend to be rule followers, and the feedback I've gotten has been positive over and over. Custodians had contacted me and said, you know, "This, this makes sense. This just makes sense." And I, I think that just, it makes me feel good that they're receiving that information. If we haven't gone through some of the training yourselves as well, the videos, I'm, you know, about halfway through, and some of them are pretty hard to take. They are pretty hard to take, so I appreciate that coming forward. And Mr. Dog, with the work on the safety committee on that. First day, I was at several of our schools. I started off at Citrus Springs Elementary, and it was a registered regular day, and that was a good thing. You know, you know, mostly all excitement. I saw a couple of tears, and then I had saw some tears from some of the students, too. And, no, it was a great day, and it was exciting to be out there with them, and we captured some of those moments. I just want to share, I had my first, because I was asked to serve on the FHSAA Appeals Committee, and Ms. Hemel, I know you have done that in the past. For those of you who don't know, there must be from each section on that committee, I know Doug knows this, because he's, he's the upper, you know, level of justice. If we don't make the right decision, they send it on to him, and he's got to do it. But there has to be either a superintendent or a school board member that's on that. But I will tell you, as, as wonderful at times as it is sitting there, it's like doing expulsions all day. That's really what it is. It's just like, and, and, you know, they have 20 minutes to make there, and oh, wow. And we had both sides of it. So I thought of you a lot, because you have talked about it in the past.
Nineteen-year-olds cannot live with...
Exactly. Exactly. I was, it was interesting to hear them talk about the size of the student. They're very concerned about that. They're, you know, I have to say, and Mr. Dog, please feel free to take this, I was very impressed with FHSAA's process. There was opportunity, there was due, there was a due process, and it really gives our student athletes an opportunity to make those cases, and I was very impressed with that. So I just wanted to share that. I talked about this before, but with, when Ms. Lindy was here talking about the professional development and the leadership development, I bring forth again NISL, about maybe if there's an opportunity in one of our workshops to just have a presentation. Mr. Mullin and a team has been doing NISL, and if you talk to any administrator, that's one of the first things, they are so excited about what they're learning. And so it's exciting to me that I think it's, this is a grant that the superintendent has worked to facilitate and bring forward. It has a huge financial, it would have been a huge financial obligation if our district was to take it on, and I just think it'd be good to, to know. And then the other thing I would share, Amendment 8. As a lot of this board knows, FHSAA passed a resolution coming out against Amendment 8. If this board is interested, there are board, there are school boards around the state that are coming out individually as boards and making a proclamation or making some type of position about Amendment 8. So I don't know if that's something that we want to do. We can also do it individually, if, you know, and have it, but if our board does, you know, timing-wise, this is what we need to start thinking about it, so that it becomes out there before November. So it's just, I kind of just throw it out there now, and then you can think about it, we can talk about it at another meeting. There's still time for that conversation. Just make sure I had everything on that, and I think I did.
Okay.
All right. Oh, I'm sorry. Two people I want to lift out. One, Mr. Dog, again, I want to thank you for representing this board. This has been a tough time, and I know you're a man of faith, as, as we are on this board, and scripture says there's a time where leaders are here for certain reasons at certain times, and I've said that, and I do believe that you, your expertise has been here during that time, so I want you to know that we appreciate that, and thank you for doing that. And Mr. Bradshaw? I don't think you've gotten as much sleep in the last number of weeks as specifically the last week or so. We appreciate your leadership through this and representing us. I know sometimes attorneys refer to us as clients. You never do. This is, this is your home. This is, you, you've been a father of children in this school system, and we very much appreciate your role in all of this.
Thank you, I appreciate that. That's, I thought that was...
Thank you. All right, very good. Yes, the SRO contract took a lot of time, and, but we, we got, I think we got the job done, and Ms. Hemel and Mr. Mullin, Mr. Bishop, a lot of time and effort has gone into this. You know, we all want what's best for kids, and we all want our schools to be safe, and there's no doubt this board stands firm in that. And so, you know, we want a collaborative effort, we want a good partnership, and I'm looking forward to that. I'm hoping that that will, will continue to grow, because I've said it before, I'll say it again, one SRO is not necessarily the solution, and we have to look at the other options. And the more I'm on the Marjory Stoneman Douglas Commission, and the discussions that are going on there, and the more information and data that's being shared, we're going to have to look at the guardian program. And I've mentioned it to the sheriff, I think it's something we're going to have to look at, at a hybrid program. I am not saying using existing employees, I'm saying hiring more employees. That's where we are able to cover schools with additional safety and security, and we need, you know, they say, it's been said mostly by the sheriffs on the commission, but they say, you know, the only way to beat a bad guy with a gun is you got to have a good guy with the gun. There's got to be a good guy with the gun there. You've seen on TV, you've seen all the programs that are going on now around the state to train guardians. I am telling you, that is what we have to keep out there before us, as more opportunities to have good guys with guns trained, ready to respond. And with that being said, I would like to, at the workshop, at our next workshop, have a school hall discussion. You know, you're telling all discussions, I don't know if, if that's the right word, but I would like to share with you some excerpts of the Marjory Stoneman Douglas Commission. Some talk that is real, is where the rubber meets the road, that's good discussion from a wide variety of experts. And my idea is, and I've talked to Mrs. Hemel a little bit about it, is to have at the next workshop on August 28th, about an hour set aside, and I want to show you some discussion items from some of the experts that deal with what happened in Broward County at Marjory Stoneman Douglas High School. And I would like to fill this room with people that would know that they're coming here at a time, certain time, to hear and to talk, listen to us talk. Because the great thing about what we do is we are working together as a team, and we talk about things that are meant to protect kids. And so that is where we're going to have to keep that as we look down the road, and as we have this vision. You know, we had the person, we had an individual from Columbine High School, and that came and spoke to the commission this last week. And it's a culture, it's an ongoing culture change that takes a lot of time, and especially when we look at hardening our school campuses. This is not something that's done in a year or two. This is done over time, and it has to be prioritized, and it has to be funded, and we have to realize that this is all for the protection of our kids. But it really is a culture change, and it's the way we, we train, it's what we do for our employees, it's what we, how we teach our students, and that is in order to protect lives and save lives, and should there be an incident on a campus. They've talked about the percentage of shooters who have been stopped by civilians, and I don't think we have a principal out there that's not going to go and try to save kids' lives if there's an active shooter. And to think that if there were opportunities, Sheriff Goltieri talked about Nicholas Cruz in the open meeting of the, of the Marjory Stoneman Douglas Commission, that dealt with the reloading time, and dealt with the things that may have changed had there been someone there to respond. And so those are things that we have to look at, and I implore that to the board and for the community, I would like us to try to get... for the community, I would like us to try to get people to come out and really hear what we talk about. And so, you know, we've got Alice in place, you know, I would like, have we all done, I've, I've done the individual training, I don't know if you guys have all been going through that, so that's a process, so that's good. You've been to some trains, I've been to training, you know, it's good to see those things, because, because it is being well-received. You agree? I mean, it is. And, but now there's got to be a, a component to start educating the kids, and, you know, we may get some pushback there. We may get some...
From the parents.
Yeah, from the parents. Yeah, I'm, I'm sorry, you're right, Mr. Bishop, that's what I meant.
Yeah.
I meant not necessarily from the kids, but the, the parents are going to be saying, why do we have to do all this? And I, and I got to tell you, there's some discussions that we had on the commission, the Public Safety Commission, that really would shed some light on why, why we have to do that. You know, there's two fathers that are on that commission now, that lost children at Marjory Stoneman Douglas. And to hear them and to see how they're still going through a grieving process, that what they say really means a lot to me. What they say, which is from a layman's perspective, but it's from a real-life incident's perspective, it really, from their heart, it's really powerful. And so, you know, and I think a lot of parents would very much relate to, to, or not relate, maybe that's, would very much listen to them, and listen to what their comments are. And, you know, hopefully that we will never have to go through it a bit like that. But, so, that's just something that, it sounds like you guys are good with that, and, and really, I would, I would want, but I'm, I'm talking about an hour, is what I'm thinking, and so...
We'll take all the time you want.
So that would be something. Now, I will, just in finishing, I will say this, that our, our Safety and Security Committee that meets, we've been meeting a lot, recently, there's a lot of, of people that are gathered to talk about this that are behind the scenes. But, like, we have a meeting on Thursday, Sherry Sernich is the, chairs the committee, and does a fine job. You know, but some of the things that I sent them, that I would like to talk about is, you know, the work of the individual school safety committees, because every school has a school safety committee, and how there are different components of that committee with the, the people, the stakeholders at that school that are on those committees. And then input on student SRO ratios. One of the jobs of the commission is to make a recommendation on what is the ratio. And there's not a lot, there's a lot of information, but ironically, we all hear this one officer per one thousand students, and, you know, and the commission, and, and the seventeen individuals who work for the commission, who are investigating the incident and also looking at recommendations, have found that that didn't come from data, that came from someone at NASRO, the National Association of School Resource Officers, because it sounded good, you know? It sounded like, well, one per one thousand, you know? So the reality of it is, we don't, we got to get some documentation, we got to get the feedback, we got to try to feel, feel what is the best way, because some of the schools, you deal with multi-school campuses, where you may have two small schools on the same campus, on the same grounds, you know? And, you know, if you have two small schools that are maybe not even six hundred students, is there a need to have two resource officers, or do you need to have one resource officer and a guardian? You know, those are the things that are going to be recommended. So I would be, I, that's one thing I would like for all of you as board members, if you have any ideas on that, any thoughts?
Facility size should be a huge factor, because, like you're saying, I mean, we have campuses, we have one campus that's, I think, about an acre, a little more than an acre in size, that's a charter school, and you have then, in essence, the same number being applied to that than Crystal River High that is, you know, I can't remember, but I want to say it's twenty-plus acres in the smallest section, right? It's huge. I mean, it's a huge difference in coverage.
The location will be...
So the, the location, the, and as you know, the geographical side of it, and the, the topography of it, all of that.
Right. You know, one of the things that we'll talk about, that I want to talk about is duress alarm capabilities. If there's, one of the things in Jefferson County and Colorado, is the teachers have an alarm, they can press a button. You guys have probably seen those things. Of course, that's all through an alarm system that is, is, you know, that is a lot to that. I mean, a lot of money, a lot of planning, all those things that we have to, but that's something we're going to talk about.
And, and Mr. Dogg, that's one of the things that, when we hear the word hardening, when the public hears the word hardening, sometimes that word refers to, people don't realize that they can be things like what you just described. That's a type of hardening.
That's right.
But they don't want to, but sometimes they think, well, it's a, it's more physical. But I believe the way, what you all are doing is saying hardening is more than just bigger, thicker walls.
Sure.
It's, it's more than that.
It's the whole picture.
So I'm so grateful that you contribute.
Yep. You know, one of the things I've got on here is lockdown alert override fire alarm, which we had discussed here to us, you know, and how we're going to do with that. And then the SRO program update, which we're all probably very well aware of, but, you know, still, we can have that feedback there. Sergeant Frank is on the, on the committee, and I think Lieutenant Farmer comes on occasion. They always have a representative there. So...
At the school level, though, you mentioned something.
Right.
And I, you know, I'm not sure, and I've served on the SAC chairperson for years, but I'm wondering if that needs to be ensured that we incorporate a parent, and one of the ways to do that could be the SAC chairperson be a part of each school's safety committee. Maybe there are, there are times when they, they aren't because, you know, of requirements for, you know, but, but that input from those parents of saying, you know, even to get the buy-in with the other parents is important. So if there's, you know, and maybe in some of those cases, as you go up the line to the high schools, we should, we could have students involved in some of those discussions.
Only the SHICS committee has a section of the SAC committee.
That could be a two.
Yeah.
Or two months.
That would be excellent.
Where they collaborate on that.
And with your, with the superintendent's council, that could be also part of the superintendent's council incorporated, because I know that you get a lot of feedback from, from those young people. Do you need from this board, though, because you've, you've done an excellent job at, I think, keeping us very aware and cognizant of the, of, of the Guardian program, and that it doesn't necessarily have to look one way, that we can be open to that being looked in ways, for example, as you described. Is it time for this board to take some action on that and have a position to say that we are interested? Because I, and it doesn't, I mean, I am certainly open to that.
Yeah, I think if we workshop this, we, we just look at what we're, what I'm, would like to bring, you know, on some comments and things, I, I think it, it will, or I think it should, I, I would like it to.
I still remember the Guardian program coming up when we, we met with the commissioners early on, and I've always had to have the sheriff's partnership in it. It is our program.
It is, it is required. The sheriff has to be the one to train the officers.
But I understand that there is legislators that are talking this legislative session about, this upcoming legislative session about modifying that to empowering school boards to be a part of going outside of their district to, in order to get that training open now.
That is correct.
And, and I think that with legislative session coming, the power of us saying to our legislative, because I do believe, at least in Representative Mazulo's side, and he's been very open, I think he's, there's been articles that he's expressed in the paper that he believes in the Guardian program as a tool, not as a, as a solution, or as a, but as a tool.
As a tool.
And I, I think that we are really reaching a time where, as you know, committee meetings will be meeting, there'll be committee assignments, getting ready to start here shortly, it's time for, if we're going to be lobbying and proactive, we need to be doing that.
In fact, we don't have to get the Mountain House to fund it, we can have a meeting where we have people from Mountain House to add what they can.
Oh, and, and that's been a big part of the commission's meeting, too, is discussing the behavioral risk assessments, and looking at what happened with Nicholas Cruz, and, you know, how there were so many, so many things along the way that weren't recognized or weren't communicated. It was very poor communication information. I'm, I'm hoping that that's going to be changing, too. Even with Department of General Justice, DCF, and with some of those state agencies that are, you know, even with Department of Education, with the way requirements are with FERPA and HIPAA and all the, all the regulations that, you know, so the MOUs that are signed, that the attorneys have said they should not, if the MOU's signed, it's, it's been approved to share the information. There's still some areas where even with an MOU, they won't share the information. And, and, you know, and so that's, those are issues, and most of the time, it's not on our end. I mean, that's, it's happening at the state agencies.